Pursuant to the open meeting by law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. The city charter, section nine dash eighteen mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy which in short provides for citizen input on planning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. There's a sign up sheet that is located in the back of the room. I'm gonna do a roll call. Gloria Pacheco.
Present.
Beth Andre.
Present.
Mario Luciola.
Yeah.
Mike Farias.
Present.
And myself, John Ferrera, present as well. From Fall River Government TV, we have Craig Salvador. Also Dan Aguirre, city engineer, present. And Chris Perrino, the assistant planner, along with Nina Kruger, his administrative clerk. We'll go to the old business. Number one on old business is surety reduction, Fieldstone Lane, Brookfield Terrace, and Stony Brook Circle. Review and discuss surety reduction requests for Highland Farms Two, Fieldstone Lane, Brookfield Terrace, and Stony Brook Circle. Dan?
So, board members, for the last month and a half, we've been working with the consultants who are the contractors, Bristol Pacific Homes, who constructed this portion of that Highland Farms Two subdivision. We've recently received interim ASBIL plans from their engineer. There were some items that we asked them to address and to give us some additional information, basically to make sure water runs downhill in some of the pipes and some of the streets. So, we're at the threshold of that happening as soon as we get plans back in, probably at some point this week. So what I would recommend is that the board grant a reduction and that for that final amount to be determined upon after my review of their updated ASBIL plans. And that amount should not exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. So the reduction that you would be allowing would not exceed that. I will review the ASBIL plans, go through their itemized requests, and hold back any additional funds that I think need to be kept in addition to what they're proposing to be released. So, we were originally, we originally had a surety of, I think, of one point one million. Their initial letter came back saying that they felt there was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of work left. So the eight hundred thousand already gives us some wiggle room, but I anticipate us reducing it by even less than that. So it would not be for an amount to exceed that.
Not to exceed the eight hundred thousand?
Right, the reduction.
Yep.
So you can either allow that to happen, or you can require that we complete this review and you can deal with it at the next meeting, but that would be another thirty days or a month away, so. However, the board would like to proceed, I'd be more than willing to take on whatever task needed to get this resolved.
Any input from the board members?
We've been waiting on this for about, like, what, almost a year now, right? On this?
For their reduction?
I'm sorry, so we've been working on this for a year, so...
No, no, for them, it's, I think it's maybe three or four months.
So we're better off just waiting another month and then getting the exact figures, what your estimates are?
That's, that's for the board to decide, yeah.
Comments?
Any other comments? Mike?
Just question, on, so that it was one point one that they had originally allocated?
That's the surety, that's posted, yes.
The surety?
Yep.
And so what are they requesting for money back right now, a total?
They are requesting for us to hold one hundred and...
So of that, we would only have remaining a hundred and seventy thousand?
They want us to hold, they want us to hold back a hundred and seventy one thousand.
And then we would just, they would reclaim the rest of it, whatever that amount is, out of the surety?
Correct, yeah, so their, their bond from, from the bank, the letter of credit?
Okay.
Would be reduced by whatever number you decide upon?
Yeah.
And then the new letter of credit would be remaining with whatever work needs to be done.
So my question to you would be is, have they been in compliance up to this point that we've given money to them?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're, we've given them no money back.
Oh, nothing?
So this, this is the first release.
Oh, this is the first release.
So this is from first shovel on the ground. They have the ability, and it's usually, if they have the financial ability to just continue, the project went very quickly and they've sold out of the place almost immediately.
Yep.
But they do have, you know, they have top coat to do, they've got some moment seating work to do, setting bounds, roadway ASBILs, and that stuff does add up.
Yeah.
Again, the numbers that they're proposing are just that, they're their numbers.
Yeah.
And they're based upon the initial numbers that were accepted as part of the subdivision surety. So that's what they're working from.
Gotcha.
So once I get an ASBIL plan and that's complete?
Yeah.
I can then go look at and say, okay, this catch patients not correct.
That's done, that's done.
So we take that one off. So I can itemize it to that degree.
Yep. But you haven't done that yet, so...
No, because the ASBIL plans that they've submitted are not, are not complete.
I would just say, at this point, you know, if, if they can get this done in a month, then they can have this resolved. That would be my, again, it protects you because at the end of the day?
Sure, yep.
You give that money to them and they haven't done it?
Yep.
Good luck trying to reclaim it.
I understand. I could go either way on it.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? So do we have a motion? Mike, you wanna make a motion to?
Yeah, I would, I would motion, I would just table it.
Just table it?
Yeah, table it until next month.
It's second motion.
Until you have the top, the opportunity to review it and you feel comfortable with what you're going to release.
That'd be good, and I'll come back with the exact figure.
So, got a motion by Mike, second by Gloria. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on to the next one. Street Redeeming, Third Street, request renaming of the portion of Third Street between Befford and Warden Street as Jean Baptiste LaPage Street, referred by city council on June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And I know at the last meeting, we had discussion on this with family members and such.
Yeah, so just quickly, the city was already in the process of determining an appropriate location for, for the renaming for, for this gentleman and, and some others, and we are attempting or looking towards adopting or locating an area within the Route seventy-nine corridor to rename some areas for them. That process is going to take a little while, as we discussed last time, so there's nothing new to add from beyond of what happened at the last meeting. I would just recommend a table.
And I know the family member was fine waiting.
Yeah.
He was in no rush, as long as he knew that there would be a sufficient space for him.
I mean, it might make sense, rather than to keep this tabled, just to remove it from the agenda, and then we can place it back on, and we can invite all the parties back at that time to let them know that we'll be taking it back up again. And we can send a letter to the council, tell them the same, if that's, if that's what the board would like.
I have a question too, Mike. I thought you were gonna email me the proposed area that you guys suggested along Route seventy-nine for these kinds of...
Yeah, it, so...
I can do it, too.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah. That's not, that's not Mike's job, so we...
I don't wanna overstep my boundaries, because I'm working for Mass DOT on the project.
Yeah.
And so, but the city has everything, and so they can send it to you.
With Dana's?
We can do that. Nina, make a note of that, and you and I can make, and Chris, to make sure we get her over a copy of the plan.
And that, those areas haven't changed since the initial design?
Yeah.
Till now?
It'd be nice to know, and any other subsequent, you know, memorials that may pop up, if we have a clue.
They're also, what we had done is given caveat to the city of representation of where the signage is, are going, but it would be up to the city to design them and figure out exactly what the end product is. And so, Dan and I have talked about, spoken about that as well, whether we would get involved to help facilitate that in the future, so, but, that's it.
Okay, anyone else? So do I have a motion to remove this from the, from the agenda?
I'm motion.
I'll make a motion to remove.
Motion by Mario, second by Beth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? First item on the new business, proposed amendment, Fall River Waterfront Urban Renewal Plan. Review and discuss proposed amendment to the Fall River Waterfront Urban Renewal Plan. The amendment would hold two properties to the original urban renewal plan list of forty-eight properties for potential acquisition, disposition, and redevelopment. These two properties are the Turner Street Lot zero dash twenty-two dash zero 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 nine, located on Deval Street, south of Turner Street, and the MS Gas Lines Services Gas Station, zero dash twenty-three dash zero 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 four, located at four thirty-one Deval Street.
I'm sorry, I just realized, we didn't ask for public comment on the last two.
Isn't, I don't think there's anybody here for that, you know, I mean, if they weren't here to represent it, then we're fine.
I don't know, maybe that gentleman did.
No.
Which project are you here for, just so that we can make?
Do you wanna listen to this one we're talking about?
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Dan, you got it, did I not?
I have nothing to add to it, no. I mean, I recommend in the endorsement and the approval, this is, these are two properties that originally when, and I don't wanna steal Sarah's presentation, but when the initial plan was put together, these parcels technically would not have been available or added to this area, but since this, since some development opportunity has increased, specifically with one of the developable parcels in between these two, it would make sense to include them in the, in this plan.
Okay. Please leave me a state and name and address, for the record.
Sarah Page. I'm the director of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, and I live at Six Winslow Street in Somerset.
You have some input on this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have a PowerPoint here.
Mm-hmm.
I realized you can't see that.
We can, it's behind you.
Oh, you can.
That's right, that's right.
Good, okay.
I'll look at it.
So, our board...
This is two thousand twenty-three. This is two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, really. So, our board, which is listed in the PowerPoint, approved this amendment at their August meeting, and we are asking you tonight to, to take two votes, to confirm that this amendment is based on a local survey and that it's consistent with existing planning documents for the area. And I'm going to cover those two items. So, this board approved the urban renewal plan in May of two thousand eighteen, and then it was finalized with the state's approval in two thousand nineteen. And this amendment is based on the survey that was done at that time, which included a citizens advisory group, two public workshops, an open house, a survey of building conditions, and an analysis of assessors' data, among other things. And so, our amendment is really based on that original survey, but in the amendment process, we updated maps with changes in the neighborhood and really looked at the new development plans, which as Dan said, really lead us to this suggestion. So, these are the urban renewal Massachusetts laws that encourage communities to revitalize disinvested and underutilized neighborhoods and redevelop substandard decadent and blighted areas, which we think this part of Deval Street is part, you know, fulfills that, and to undertake a range of public actions to address these conditions, to create environments needed to promote sound growth and attract and support private investment. So this amendment is consistent with those purposes, and it really is consistent with the goal that the Deval Street area become redeveloped as a vibrant waterfront, which is very much in the midst of planning with Route seventy-nine coming down and so much happening in that area. So this is where we are in the amendment process. The Fall River Redevelopment Authority had a public hearing in September, they voted on the amendment. Now we're here asking for your vote. We'll be going next to the city council at their next meeting, and then we'll send it to the state for their approval. So here are the two properties, and we're at, we want to add them to the urban renewal plan for potential acquisition, disposition, and redevelopment. And they're in an area that is being redeveloped, and these two make sense to add to the urban renewal plan at this point. One is the MS Gasoline Services Site, and another is an old Liberty Utilities property, and those are the two properties. And here's a picture of the plans that these, this amendment is consistent with, the Fall River Master Plan and the two thousand nineteen Fall River Urban Renewal Plan. So this outlines many of the parcels that were in the original urban renewal plan. The blue are potential acquisitions, the green are potential rehabilitation, pink, spot clearance, and then the red are the two small sites that we want to add. So, the original urban renewal plan responded to Mass DOT's plan to de-elevate and realign Route seventy-nine, which will reconnect the waterfront with the rest of the city and create nineteen new developable acres. And this part of the waterfront plan really focuses on Route seventy-nine and Deval Street, and that's why we want to work, consider these parcels. So, to give you an update on what's happened with the implementation of the urban renewal plan to date, we now have a request for proposals out to find a master planner to work with the redevelopment authority and the city on a master plan for that nineteen acres. And developments of City Pier, which we're very excited about, and private development of the residents at River's Edge are right in this area that we're talking about. We're looking at an acquisition of, the purchase of forty-five Anawan Street, which is part of the original urban renewal plan, and clearances have happened along Deval Street to remove blighted buildings. So all of that is in process. And new multifamily development, the one that we just looked at includes forty-nine units that have been built and a hundred and twenty are planned. So, this amendment is consistent with redeveloping, redeveloping blighted spaces for commercial, residential, and retail uses, and will better integrate Route seventy-nine with the adjacent neighborhoods, or as part of that whole effort. And then, consistent with the master plan, we're investing in the waterfront, addressing persistent blight, and building out the Route seventy-nine Deval Street Boulevard. So it's consistent with those goals as well. So that's what we're planning and asking you to support.
So you're looking for our support and bringing it over to the city council?
Yes, and to specifically take a vote that this is consistent with a local survey and that it's consistent with plans, the city's existing planning documents for the area.
Board members, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, I'm looking at the document that we received here, and it's just Table two dash two A, Amendment, one parcel, the acquisition and disposition of it. And this is just for those two parcels that we're speaking of, the, the ones that are on Deval Street and four thirty-one, which is the gas station?
Mm-hmm.
So my one question would be is, originally, the, the development parcel, which the Liberty Utility was going to be allocated for the stormwater sewer treatment facility, that's no longer going to be there, it's gonna be mixed use, and that's in another parcel of land, in, in around that area?
Yes.
Okay, and then...
Yeah, so the, the CSO portion of utilization of that parcel has now been moved into one of the internal parcels of the undevelopable portion of the seventy-nine project.
And then, so, and then basically, you're trying to do mixed use residential, commercial, I'm assuming first floor, residential, and residential above? That's what you're proposing on those two parcel of land? So this is common to be able to try?
Private developer is working on plans for those parcels, and all we're trying to do is give the redevelopment authority the potential to acquire that additional...
Two pieces of land, yeah.
Parcel that was not initially in the private developer's plan, but could be advantageous.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I just have, I'm gonna give last one quick question, just, just process wise. Did we, did we receive any comment from either of the landowners?
No.
No, about being added?
No.
Because I think they were notified.
Yes.
Because I, I did get a call from one of them, the gas station owner, who was actually a past client of mine, and I had explained to him what the process was and could actually be beneficial to him, and, because he's been trying to sell the property for a very long time. So, that was it. I just didn't know if they went to the meeting, or if they had any comments, or had called anybody.
And being familiar with the project as well, the only other question I have is, knowing what the flood zone is in, in and around that area, especially the gas station, I'm all for this, the acquisition of this, of these parcels of land, especially for those uses. It's advantageous for the entire waterfront and development, but one of those things would be is the, that is, it's in a flood zone area, and whoever, whatever you end up doing, you're gonna own it and do something with it, whatever that might be, but you should be just aware of that.
Yeah, I mean, we've had discussions about, you know, building codes and what we would need to do.
That's a, that's more of a site plan review issue than, than this issue here. For the, for the record, Ken Fiola, Executive Vice President, Bristol County Economic Development Consultants, that's, that's a separate issue per se, because in the event that the development plans come forward for the parcel that's currently there, or the addition of these two parcels, that'll all be reviewed under site plan review, and they'll have to adhere to not only the site plan review?
All zoning, all the development standards.
Right, as well as in other stands. What this clearly is doing here, this is, just gives the redevelopment authority the potential, or the, it allows the redevelopment authority to purchase these properties if necessary. It doesn't mean that they're gonna acquire them, it doesn't mean they're gonna take them by eminent domain, but it just gives them the power to move in that direction if it's absolutely necessary. I think we would all agree that eminent domain is some, is a tool of last resort, and hopefully, you know, people can negotiate friendly purchase and sale agreements that are based upon reasonable valuations as opposed to escalated valuations. And this site here is, if you've gone by there, you can see it does meet the definition of blight and decadence, because it's just overgrown and really not producing anything of any value to, you know, to that corner located on Deval and Pier Street itself.
Any other questions?
Can you know if either piece has any, like, environmental deficiencies?
Yeah, there's been a, there's been, I know...
That could be resolved as part of all this?
Well, I know that there's been a release notification form filed for the Turner Deval Street property with DEP.
Any other, just being a gas station, you have to assume that there's something there, but it also gives the opportunity to resolve those matters, so it's a good thing.
Right.
Any other comments, sir? Did you wanna comment, or just?
Basically, I was concerned by if the city took it on, would they be liable for any pollution on those sites?
Yeah, so, so...
Because of the gas companies, and the, and the gas stations, and the, and the...
So...
My name is John Solisbeak.
Typically, how that would work is if...
Five five four Dr. Ricky Street.
Typically, how that would work is, so when we, when we took the property by eminent domain for the ATMC Center on Martin Street, remember the old Kermel property? What you essentially do is, before there's any takings of the property, you get on the site, you identify what the contamination, contamination is, the level of contamination, and what the remediation cost would be. And so then you take that and you juxtapose those costs against whatever market valuation the property would have, and you hold that money in advance until the land is actually cleaned up. So, at no point in time would the redevelopment authority or city be responsible for taking on that sort of work, and then even by law, you know, it goes back to the property owner for the, as being the cause of the contamination. So, I think, you know, we, in this case here, it's well documented as to what the contamination is, and now it's just a matter of the cost of, identifying what the cost of cleanup is.
All right. So do we have a motion?
You wanna do both at the same time?
Well, we could, we just want, we just prefer the moment, just confirm that they're consistent with...
Probably separate votes.
Separate?
Oh, you two separate?
So my question, I only have one more question. So there's two on the docket here. One is the transfer of the land, or approving that, and the other one was the documentation of the actual maps themselves, is that correct? Is that what you were looking for as well?
No, it's the...
With the survey?
That it was based on a survey, but surveys, this broad concept of the urban renewal plan, surveys...
It's not a land survey. It's not a land survey.
Okay.
It's more like an inventory.
Okay, yeah, I, I haven't seen any of that, that's all I'm saying, and I've seen the list here, that's why I'm gonna vote on something, I wanna know when I'm voting on.
I totally understand, the survey word is consistent.
Not a survey plan, or a survey.
Yeah, sure.
It's based on the whole survey done as part of the urban renewal plan.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
So the first motion will be to, to the acquisition portion?
Both, to add the two parcels into the urban...
Yeah.
Well, if it's consistent with the...
Sarah, why don't you read them one at a time?
Yep.
How you would like it to be written?
Great. So, it's to confirm the amendment is based on a local survey.
Period.
Got it.
Motion? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that we confirm that the amendment that's proposed is conforming with the local survey.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll thirty-second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that's first.
Then the second is that the amendment is consistent with existing planning documents for the area.
Do I have a motion to accept that?
No.
With motion and second?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? No. We're good there.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Well?
That was for Sarah.
Mr. Fiola?
That's for everybody. Make it better.
Okay, number two on the, on the agenda on the new business, Form A, application for endorsement of a plan believed not to require approval, and our plan of land. File number twenty-three dash one five five eight, owner applicant Dan Quintel Senior and Dan Quintel Junior. Property location forty-two dash forty-four Tecumseh Street, assessors map, I dash fourteen dash zero zero three six.
So the plan meets the requirements for endorsement, the only comment that I could really make was that there's a notation which we require that they put on the plan if the plan is subject to a granted variance or special permit. This was actually a special permit, but the note references the word variance, not a big deal. I wouldn't, they do give the book and page number of the zoning relief, so I wouldn't make them go back and make a change on that.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion approve.
Motion by Mike, second?
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Second Form A, application for endorsement, apply and believe not to require approval, and our plan of land. File number twenty-three dash one five five nine, owner applicant Maria A. Renato. Property location nineteen Manning Street and three eighty East Warren Street. Assessors map, J dash twenty dash zero zero one seven, zero zero one nine, and zero zero five eight.
So again, this plan meets the requirements for endorsement. What they're proposing to do is to create that narrow sliver of a parcel that you see there, and then convey that parcel to the smaller lot, which is to the right of the plan that you're looking at. So, taking out that sliver from the larger lot, conveying it to the smaller lot, no zoning issues, they, they still far exceed the, the setback to the existing structure on the, on the larger lot, so.
May I ask, what was the purpose of conveyance of that land?
I, I'm assuming that somebody wanted some additional land, they don't, they don't provide that information. There could have been an encroachment, there could have been a fence over the line.
Gotcha.
It could have been, maybe they're selling it, and this is an opportunity to just sell a little strip to somebody and make a few extra dollars, I don't know that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Gloria, second?
Second it.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ayes. Last Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval, and our plan of land. File number twenty-three dash one five six zero, owner applicant Rainey Realty LLC. Property location seventeen dash twenty-seven Wilcock Street. Assessors map, G dash twenty-six dash zero zero one eight.
So again, this plan meets the requirements for endorsement, it is subject to a special permit granted by the zoning board of appeals that allows the subdivision of parcels when there are two residential structures in existence prior to nineteen fifty-four.
that allows the subdivision of parcels when there are two residential structures in existence prior to nineteen fifty-four, which is the, the subdivision control law here in the city. I think, John, you're probably okay with this one.
This one, this one, I'm good.
This one's a little bit more conventional.
I'm good with this one.
And, and just, you know, I mean, through that process, we ensure that, that everybody gets separate utilities there, and there are no issues with any cross easements or anything like that. This one's about as simple as, as you get.
And for the record, I was happy with the last one as well.
But not the first.
For whatever, for whatever reason, the one, the first one.
I, I understand.
So may I just have a quick question, this is, so because this is grandfathered in, it, it's probably a non-conforming lot.
They are, correct, they are both non-conforming.
They're non-conforming lots, but those are existing buildings that are on here?
Yep.
And so what are we actually doing, just subdividing this one?
Just subdividing, so, we have, we have a special provision, uh, eighty-six four twenty-three B, I think it is off the top of my head, um, that allows residential structures that are on a similar, on sim, one lot to be subdivided.
Gotcha.
Um, in a manner, like, it goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and there's a discussion of why did you put the line here? Or setbacks and driveways and, um, utilities, so. But, and in this one, they, they tried to make both of the lots about the same size, make sure that everybody had the same amount of access, at least around one side of the house.
Mm-hmm.
So each of the houses is kind of pushed to the left-hand side, and that would provide adequate access along the right-hand side, so.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Mario, second, Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next, it'll be approval of the minutes of the August ninth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. I believe everybody was here last meeting. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve.
Beth's motion to approve, second?
I'll make motion second.
Mario, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. No citizens input?
I, I'll go check. They are, they're hiding.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Beth makes, Beth makes a motion to adjourn, second?
I second.
Gloria, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good night.
Good night.